I will call the meeting to order and welcome everybody that's here this evening and also those that will be watching on YouTube later on. First, order of business, I would like that you join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, just a friendly reminder, if you have any electronic devices with you, please put them on airplane mode, on silent or on off, so they don't disturb our proceedings here this evening. And again, welcome. So first is, I'm gonna make a few introductions. We have a number of people here up at the podium that you might want to know who they are. So I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Pam Mortenson, Mike Maliter, Shannon Bruce, and John Chumperlin. And next to John, we have our city engineer with WSB, Paul Hornby. And then on the end, we have Gary Peters, our public work superintendent. And then we have Cassandra Tabor, who is the director of administration. To my right, we have our city administrator, Mike Barone. Brian Grimm is our finance director. David Abel is our community development director. And then next to David, we have Ron Beatty, who is with Kennedy and Graven, and our city attorney. And then on the very end, last but not least, is our chief of police, Paul Falls. So with that, is, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, then, is there a motion to accept or approve the agenda as presented?
Some of it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Chumperlin, I think you were second. Ms. Mortenson made the motion, and Mr. Chumperlin seconded it, to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So are we gonna start our meeting with some special presentations, because we have some very special people with us this evening? First, we have Sheriff Rich Stanek with us this evening, with Hennepin County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff, welcome, and thank you for coming. I say that sincerely, because I know it's a lot of time out of your schedule to meet with all of the communities that your, that your office encompasses, so thank you for coming.
And Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much for having me out this evening. My name's Rich Stanek, and we have become sheriff. And with me this evening is Sergeant, two other special guests. Sergeant Cal McDaniel works in our community engagement team, and Samantha Kleinfield works our intergovernmental relations. She works with a lot of elected officials, both on the city level, state level, congressional level, and all points in between. It's a big county, she stays really, really busy. It's a pleasure to be out here with all of you tonight. I told Madam Mayor just prior to this meeting that I could do this in nine minutes unless she said, "Take the full ten." She falls and I get a chance to meet every so often for a cup of coffee, and find out what's important to the residents out here in Minnetrista, and how policing is going. And I really appreciate your support of your local police department, it makes all the difference in the world. You think about Hennepin County as a, as a whole, and you, you move across the county from 35 different cities, to 1.3 million residents, to probably a 35-mile drive from downtown Minneapolis out here, and then you go all the way down to the airport, to Ridgefield, up north to Champlin, and then Elka County, and you get a pretty good idea of how big this county is, but it's a local county, right? Every city does things the way that city wants it to operate, according to the elected officials and the residents by which they receive their direction and how they govern. I'm gonna cover just four quick things tonight, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. One is a little about the sheriff's office and the jurisdiction countywide, and how we work with your local police department. Really, what's the difference between the dark blue uniforms like Chief Falls and the men and women out here, where versus what Sergeant McDaniel, the men and women in the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office? And then how they tag team in terms of public safety efforts, but always defer on the local locals to the local, local people. So you look at our agency leadership and our responsibilities, the eight lines of business real brief, and what those service levels are out here in the city of Minnetrista to all of you. And then three public safety partnership areas are important to me. Madam Mayor, members, I think Samantha left you this 2018 update, and we're really gonna talk a lot about what I'm gonna cover here tonight, really, you know, what is the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, what is local law enforcement in county Y? Whether you live at Plymouth, or Rogers, or Champlin, Ridgefield, out here in Minnetrista, St. Boniface, and how they are working tandem in order to provide a seamless level of public safety service for all of you. My background is simply this, 35 years as a police officer, living in the county of the northwest of Park, my wife Sally, and my two kids. The last three sheriffs took 70 years of service, Sheriff Ed Ryan, Sheriff Don O'Mott, Sheriff Patrick McGowan, and now I've been here for loving years, moving on from there. I talked about this 1.3 million residents, 550 square miles, 104 lakes, three major rivers, 45 different cities, the one unorganized territory, which is down at Fort Stelling, the air and guard bases, the VA hospital, and all the beauty down there with the natural, you know, the reserve and all that happens. And then you've got 36 local police departments like in Minnetrista, like the sheriff's office, and you've got nine federal law enforcement agencies that we work and coordinate, that seamless public safety service level across our county. My agency looks a lot like your local police department, right? My day-to-day operations are run by a chief deputy, which is akin to the chief of police, and then three majors run the eight divisions, or what are our eight lines of business. Under state law, this is the sheriff's, people say all the time, "Well, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, where does the sheriff derive his or her authority from?" That actually comes from state law, we're statutorily put in place by virtue of election, and my powers and duties follow the chapter 387, whereas Chief Falls' powers and duties come from the empowerment of your local elected officials, you and your council. Eight lines of business look like this, our jail books about 33,000 to 40,000 people a year. In the lower underneath, you can see the number of bookings out here in Minnetrista. And unfortunately, we include St. Boniface, because they're a contract policing partner with you, so it's hard to separate out the two, and so we just include them together. Our court security, we govern eight different courthouses around Hennepin County. Most of you familiar with the Twin Towers downtown, the Hennepin County Government Center, 24 floors each side, 9,000 county employees come and go out of those buildings. But we also have a number of courtrooms, right, on both sides of the tower. And then you've got family court on one side of downtown, juvenile court on the other side of downtown. You've got three outer division courts that your residents may have a need for, at Brookdale, Southdale, and Ridgefield. All total, about 90 courtrooms, and 72 to 75 judges and referees that govern the fourth judicial district. Our patrol division is located in Brooklyn Park, but we have sub-stations at county Y. You can see the number of hours supporting Minnetrista. This just includes our patrol deputies, it doesn't include the other men and women who work in the sheriff's office, and we have about 1,100, total 800 of whom are full-time sworn personnel. The other 300 are volunteers, they come, special deputies, our community advisory board are volunteers, receive extracurricular events across the cities. And then a lot of patrol, we're gonna talk about that at the very end, we were talking earlier about the LMCD, we're representative to it. Our warrants and civil process are both mandated by state law, the chapter 387. These are duties that the sheriff has mandated provide to the residents of Hennepin County, and no matter what city you live in, if you have a local police department in place like you do, a good police department in place like Chief Falls operates, then we defer the local autonomy for them to provide the level of service that they wish to provide to the residents, and then we will, not supplant, but we'll supplement upon request to the local chief of police and/or mayor. There are some cities in which we provide 100% of the services, like Medicine Lake in Greenfield and others, and then there's a number of others like in Minnetrista, Minneapolis, Rogers, Champlin, Ridgefield, that we provide some portion thereof. Our investigative division, you can see the number of requests for information sharing analysis unit, or other investigations that we get involved in. We generally get involved, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, in investigations when they cross over jurisdiction boundaries. If you've got something happening, maybe a pattern of burglaries or something out here in Minnetrista, maybe St. Boniface is seen likewise, maybe one of the other cities, so on and so forth, and that's where the sheriff's office gets involved. Sergeant McDaniel has jurisdiction in all 45 cities across Hennepin County. And Chief Falls and the men and women who work out here are jurisdiction within Minnetrista, and then through St. Boniface in the contract, and they work on mutual aid then with the other local law enforcement agencies surrounding it, and it works well, we use it all the time ourselves. Our 911 dispatch, we dispatch for the city of Minnetrista, you can see about 6,500 computer rated dispatch events, about 80, 85% of our 911 calls, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, coming through cellular phones these days, very few places handle our landlines. Remember, a landline, when you pick that up, and I saw one back in the office I was in, if you pick that up, it'll tell us the exact address of where we are out here. But if you call from a cellphone, it doesn't tell us where you are, sometimes it doesn't tell us who you are. You've gotta stay in the line before being disconnected, or losing that call in order to tell us what's happening and how we find you. And then we dispatch all local police.
So you can't, you can't ping the cellphone? I, I don't know, I mean, I'm much better.
The right term analogy, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, ping is a, is a good term, but as the chief knows, we may get within 15, 25, 35, 40 meters. Out here, we'll be a little bit farther out into the rest of the part of the county, well that's, that's pretty easy to find, and when you're more centrally located downtown, or in one of the first, second, third ring suburbs, where it's more densely populated, and that could be, if you're on the 13th floor of the IDS, you know, good luck trying to figure out where the other 49 floors to get to, and that's, that's the problem. And so we encourage people, and they'll tell you, stay on the phone, don't disconnect from 911 when you make that call with your cellular phone, if you do, call us back. And it gives us location information, but it's not as accurate, I think, as one might, one might think. And we talked about a lot of patrol, certainly, we patrol 104 lakes, one of them being Lake Minnetonka, the largest lake in the county, very busy, right? Thousands and thousands and thousands of boats, every day, weekends, even busier. The other night, I was at a concert over in Wayzata Bay with Lemon Skinner and Chief Trippi, and somebody else, even the sheriff gets out of it, but we had fun, but, you know, we're 400 or 500 boats out watching the fireworks, listening to the concert. People generally are very safe on the waterways, we've not had, and knock on the wood, drowning out in Lake Minnetonka for the last couple of years, we do have accidental deaths, suicides, accidents, but not, not drownings. And you can see the number of hours controlled out on Lake Minnetonka, you can see the number of DWI, which are the same thing as DWI at land. A year before that, the numbers were two and a half times higher than that. And we spend a lot of time on helping change people's behavior rather than enforcement aspect, or we're not afraid to do the enforcement aspect if the first part doesn't do the trick. For a lot of patrol, Lake Minnetonka turned out just fine, you know, people were lower apprehensive, being, you know, a week, a beautiful, beautiful week, you know, warm weather both in front of it and behind it, and then the morning of 4th of July, of course, the weather didn't cooperate as much as people get blind, which was good for me, bad for them. And our numbers were down rather substantially until the evening with the fireworks. You remember a couple of years ago, these numbers were triple, quadruple, even higher than that in terms of medicals, accidents, injuries out on, out on the, maybe we'll add some credit to LMCD as well, I know, as a representative, you guys work very hard on that. Our forensic science division, crime lab, also works upon requests from local law enforcement, if you have a burglary, personal crime, violent crime, whatever it may be, we will come out and help process the scene, bring that evidence down to the crime lab, live by testimony in court. They're very good at what they do, there are about 40 or so individuals that work down there, all of them with advanced science degrees. They are internationally accredited, and they make a huge difference day in and day out, but they work upon request from your local law enforcement, so. Men and women out here in the policing need assistance, and they call the commodity and that provided to them. I wanna talk to you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, about opioids and prescriptions, right? You can just look at this trend over the last five years, and see what's, what's been happening. Last year, in this county alone, 175 people lost their lives to prescription drug, opioid. And you think about that versus a number of car crashes, homicides, that number runs about three times our homicide rate countywide. If I had three times homicide rate, getting up to 175 people in one year in this county, a lot of people would be asking a lot of tough questions, and not only me, but also local law enforcement. Nonetheless, you see 153, 110 the year before that. Issue, the numbers are down ever so slightly, but a lot of good things happening with prescription drug and, and opioid. We did a national night out, we went out to block clubs all over the community events all over the county, we provide local law enforcement with the terror of the drug disposal aids, as well as, I think, all of your offices out here carry Narcan as well.
Yes.
Yeah, we just had another save from the sheriff's office up in Corcoran, and then we get a chance to patrol countywide. It's the second time he's, he's administered Narcan to a different individual, once was in Rogers, once in Corcoran, just the last three months, four months, and brought somebody back to life. Every day, dozens of people, I swear, are brought back to life using Narcan or in the lock zone, which is really good, but it is not the end-all, be-all, we still lose way too many people, and people have to change the way they're, they're doing things. We use hashtag nobody else as our public service campaign, whether you use those drug boxes, the little green ones there, there are a dozen of them countywide. Over the last couple of years, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we've collected about 150,000 pounds of unused, unwanted, expired meds, and that's by them, or by you, bringing it to us, and then we dispose of it, dispose of it. Now, we provide these drug disposal pouches to all of you, and you're welcome to take them, you're welcome to put a wrap of them out in your lobby out here in city hall, it's a great service and convenience for your residents. Talked about national night out, we govern nearly 15,000 of these medicine disposal aids that are out there now, and hoping that residents will take matters in their own hands, and dispose of these drugs a proper way. You know, sheriff's office traditionally focuses on the violent crimes, so over the last 10 years, 11 years, violent crime in this county, and only count violent crime as rape, robbery, murder, aggravated assault, the worst of the worst has dropped about 26%, that's a good thing for your residents out here, as well as residents countywide. And that's it, Madam Mayor, comments, nine minutes I took, nine minutes and 10 seconds, but I still got a little time left. I'm happy to take any questions, or if I can't answer it tonight, I'm happy to come back to you.
Any questions?
Sheriff, can you talk a little bit about the crime lab thing that kind of came up in the last year, so I mean, I was personally glad to see you guys stay in that business versus both being proposed, but you mind if we do that, if you don't mind?
Sure. So, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and thank you for the question. The sheriff crime lab, like I said, is internationally accredited, located downtown Minneapolis, but they work countywide, there are about 40 or so individuals that work there. About 20 of them are crime scene investigators, they are sworn deputies, and then they patrol countywide, and when a need comes up, they will respond out to the scene and collect the evidence, maybe photos, maybe DNA, maybe blood evidence, property, whatever it might be. And back in December, November, December, there was a move to delete the Hennepin County Sheriff Crime Lab from under the sheriff's jurisdiction, a movement under the county administration jurisdiction. They had not thought that very well, they had not thought that through very well. A number of cities, local police chiefs and others stepped up to say, "Time out, let's, let's reconsider this, get a chance to hear from the residents." So residents spoke very loud, a lot of them, I think, people thought that they would, and they thought maybe they weren't paying attention, but they were paying attention. People love their policing services in this county. That crime lab is one of eight of the sheriff's line of business. It is the only line of business that is not mandated by state law, and it's been only through the generosity of the county board, which gets their funding from taxpayers of Hennepin County. Each resident here pays either property or business county tax, and so we were able to stave off that move, to move it. I think it's pretty well done. We, there weren't any problems going into it, and the local police chiefs love the service level that it provides, and I think it's had a huge impact on the reduction of violent crime, like I said, 26% over the last 10 years or so countywide, and that's counting from Minneapolis to the other 40, 40 cities in between, and I think they like this service level. And thank you for your support of it as well.
Yeah, good to have that in our county. So just a quick comment, maybe. So recently, Minnetrista had a large fundraiser, and I was talking to our police chief, and he said, he said that he coordinated with Hennepin County Sheriff's Water Patrol, and is that then funded by the applicant, or by the person that holds that event, or how is that funded?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Chief, are you talking about Ra?
Yes, right.
I believe that is the one you're referring to.
So, in that case, that resident on the lake does this as a charity.
Right.
We do not charge the residents back for the services we provided for patrol boats that day. Remember, we have about 125 volunteers or special deputies who are residents of the county, who provide about 50,000 hours a year of volunteer service. We provide a couple of our sworn deputies, we provide several of our non-s sworn deputies, these volunteers, and that's how we police it, but we do not go back and charge the individual, because again, they pay property taxes.
Right. It was a big event, and according to our, our police chief said that it was very, very good event, everything went off smoothly, so thank you for participating.
It was the practice, Madam Mayor, we just had one last week out in Wayzata Bay with, like I said, Lemon Skinner.
Yeah.
You know, it was a smaller event than that, but nonetheless, we do these all the time, we through LMCD and the permitting process, and they allow it to happen, and then we provide those policing services with local partnership. In that case, it was your agency, the one that would do, Wayzata Police Department on site.
Yep, good. Any other questions? Again, thank you for coming, I know you're very busy, so.
And Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you very much, and again, I appreciate your support of the local police department. Chief Falls and the men and women out here do a phenomenal job, but honestly, it's, you know, it's a tough environment today, they couldn't do without your support and the lessons, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have another special presentation this evening, and I, are we gonna start with the presenter, or did you wanna? Okay, so Diana McCowen is here from Green Step Cities, and here to present some ideas, and thank you for coming, and looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Diana McHewan, and I represent the Minnesota Green Step Cities program here tonight. I'll go through a PowerPoint and talk a little bit about it. It's a little confusing, because it's a partnership, and so I don't, it's not an organization, so I work for the Great Plains Institute, which is a nonprofit clean energy organization in the city of Minneapolis, about 200 years old, and so as part of that work, because the Great Plains is one of the partners, I am here to represent the team. So, the Minnesota Green Step Cities program is really looking at opportunities to take action with some group proven best practices for Minnesota cities that really want to explore sustainability. So it's a action-oriented voluntary free program, doesn't cost anything to join the program, and it's, as the steps may imply, it's a way to increase your activity with regards to sustainability, using a set of best practices that were developed here in Minnesota, for Minnesota cities. Just a little history, there was, there was some events, and in such, that the state actually Department of Commerce was working on in 2007, and there was a number of communities that really wanted to explore being recognized for their sustainability, and at that point, it was a little bit more focused on clean energy efforts. And so a conversation was begun in 2008, the legislature, and conversations with them, asked for a report about what that would look like. So a report was done after a couple of statewide advisory technical committees and committees came together. In the fall of 2008, actually, it was the, there were two half-day sessions that were a whole group of folks, including city members, either whether it's staff, elected, city managers at all kind of levels, and then there were nonprofits and state agency folks that came together to really kind of look at what, what a program might just look at, and we had kind of a bare bones of a program, and got some feedback from those divided advisory committees, and then four technical committees that were done, the specifics of the topics that we'll go into, and the best practices. And then it was officially launched in 2010 at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, so we're eight years old now. It's had really broad uptake, 123 cities that are participating across the state. You'll see, obviously, there's a big kind of chunky metro, because we have a number of cities in that cluster, but there's no, we're on the, on the map of the state where there's big, you know, glaring areas where there's not, some cities that have been involved in the program, so we're really happy about that. It's actually probably a little bit more than 45% of the population at this point, big and small, liberal and conservative, urban and rural, it's just a whole mix, and you can't really kind of pinpoint what kind of city joins this program. We have a sheet, and it's a PDF that's downloadable on our website, if you'd like to look at it, a number of different city staff and electeds that have shared their, what they view as benefits of participation, you know, talking about costs, and engagement, engaging cities, resources, all kinds of different things that they're really excited about as far as the program's concerned. I always like to show a city who around you are participating in the program, and so, you know, there, it's quite a wide variety, sort of all around, but Eden Prairie's been involved from early, early on, Minnetonka Shore, Victoria, our mayor, New Germany, Cologne, Delano, Lethville, so you can even see from that list, small, big, I mean, it's just a real variety kind of all around you here. Every year at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, there is some sort of breakfast workshop, some sort of event. This was in 2012, was that when the Duluth flood was? We were up there for that year, I think. And so, right after the, a couple of days after the flood in Duluth, we were up there, and Paul Douglas, you can see kneeling down in the front, he was the keynote for the event, it was really interesting, and he comes at it from a perspective of science, he's a meteorologist, he also is a self-described conservative, religious person of faith, and so it's an interesting message that he delivers, and I think that really captured the audience when he was there speaking. There is recognition also that happens at the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, we give out blocks, so you can see right there, that's two blocks stacked, so they already have one block, that's their step one, and then that's the step two, and they get kind of, and I include, but there's a kisa that, you know, in Velcro that they get stuck together, so you'll see the step, just like the logo up in the top corner. So, what's different about Green Step Cities? You know, it is a program that was built specifically for Minnesota, for our climate, for the kind of cities that we have, the, all the best practices in the technical aspect were developed by experts in that, that field. It was not designed for the big cities, it was not designed for Minneapolis and St. Paul and Rochester and Duluth and those big cities, it was really designed for the smaller cities that don't have sustainability staff, et cetera. All of those cities, except for Minneapolis, are actually part of the program now, and I think Minneapolis is looking at them joining as well. Lots of flexibility within each best practice, that was one of the biggest pieces, if you guys have forgotten the advisory committee, when we pulled them together before we put the program together, is wanting really some flexibility to choose from a menu of how to move forward. There are real resources for people who can help with each of the best practices, so it's a really rich kind of support and resource. A lot of cities looking at sustainability, it provides a really nice framework, and it really, it provides a mechanism to share with your residents what you're doing on sustainability. More and more, we're hearing from cities, you know, that the residents in the community are looking for, you know, what is the city doing, and it's a really easy way to show them, here are all the actions on the website, and, you know, look, you can look at other cities and what they're doing, here, here we are, and here's what we're doing, and so it's a great way to share information and be really transparent with your community about what you're doing on sustainability. So the partners, as I said, it's a partnership, it's a public-private partnership, so we have a couple of state agencies, a couple of nonprofits, you know, it's, it's a variety, and of course, the League of Minnesota Cities was on board at the very, very beginning, could not do this without them, they're incredible partner. And so, really, a rich program with the partners that we have in place to help deliver this program across the state. It's an award-winning program. We actually won two awards in 2012, both in the realm of sustainable communities, that category, and then we won overall partnership of the year, and I don't know if you can see, but I'm on the end over there, so I got to, it was very exciting to be part of it, because I was part of this program from the ground up when we first started, got started, very exciting. So the program has, oops, has 29 best practices in five different categories. So, those are the categories, building, some lighting, transportation, land use, environmental management, and economic and community development. And then under each of the five categories, so there's, you know, you'll see listed then the full 29 best practices, then for each best practice, when you click on and go into that part of the website, each best practice will have four to eight actions, and depending And depending on what kind of, what category city you are, and I believe B, right?
B city.
B city? There will be, it'll say, you know, city, B cities, category B cities will, to satisfy this best practice, will need to do two actions, many two actions. Or you need to do action number one and one other one, or whatever. So it'll give you clear guidance. So again, that menu of opportunity. And there are some that we feel like can't really call you a green city unless you're doing it. Example I like to use is benchmarking the energy use of your buildings. That's a really, really kind of basic kind of piece that you need to be doing for your city. So this is just a screenshot of the website. Each best practice has a best practice advisor. I think the pictures may be covered up. And then there's a bunch of the different actions. And that, that corner there, this shows, you know, category C city or A and B and what they need to do. This one happens to be about renewable energy. But again, and, and, and when you click on the best practice action, below that, it will show who's doing it, other cities that are doing it, where are some other resources, and you can really kind of go deeper to get more information. So, how do you do it? You know, build community support that can come from a variety of different places. City staff, elected officials, residents, et cetera. Identify the practices that your cities are already doing, or would like to do. I don't think that's coming next. Identify Green Step City contact person. It doesn't have to be a city person, a city staff person, better than it is. City council signs a resolution that says we want to join. And then you become, once that resolution is signed, then you become a step one. And then you can work towards step two with completion of the best practices for your city category. Sample resolution on the website, you can tweak it however you want, as long as it says you want to join the program. You put it in here, that's very well. So I just wanted to go quickly through the program. A couple of other things that I just want to say is that it's a great way to share information with your community, to talk about that, you know, really be transparent and having that information. And also to engage the community. There are, you know, there can be ways to do that. And one of the things that I know a lot of cities, you know, have a water utility. What are ways you can help educate, share resources with your community about how to save water? And how that, you know, you know, what are the tools and resources that they have there? The other thing I want to say that wasn't in there is that you go to your own case. It's up to you, you could choose how fast you want to go. And then the last thing, some of the actions in there, especially looking at buildings and saving energy, are cost-saving measures. And so, saving the city money, saving taxpayer money, big bonuses there for a lot of cities, and they often start at that spot. So it's nice to start with that, saving some money. So, I guess that's all I have to say, I'll pause for questions.
It's a lot of information to kind of absorb, but, so Diana is here this evening, Ms. McCowen is here this evening because I've heard about this through the lead conferences that I've attended. And one, a couple of things that kind of quit my interest is, one, that it could potentially save the city money. We can do that without being a Green Step City, obviously. But if we are a Green Step City, which doesn't cost us anything, and we do some of these things, we save money and we get recognition for it. So that's a good thing. But the other thing, and one of the goals that we have, is community outreach. And I thought this would also be in community engagement. So this could also fall into that category as well. And also disseminating good information to our residents on, we just talked about it this evening earlier at a work session, how to save money on your, on your water bill. So all of these things, they kind of duck-tail together and, and really interested me. And I thought, you know, it might be worth taking a look at and maybe thinking about making our city a Green Step City. So, did you want to add anything?
Oh, I was gonna add, just, sorry, members of the council. I did have some examples that I'll go through in a moment as to some of the things that we've already accomplished, things that we're working to and where that might put us against the Green Step process as we look towards step two, assuming that we decide to do this, which is step one. But I did want to make sure she could answer any other questions that are, that you have on your minds as well, outside of that.
Okay, so, go ahead.
All right, perfect.
I'll just stand here because it's easier. So, as Diana mentioned, first step is to adopt a resolution for participation. What really appealed to me as the staff member doing research into this process was how easy everything was. So we always look at how much time it's going to take for a staff member to do these things. You didn't get a very good view of just that one screenshot of the website, but it's very user-friendly. The resource that you need, if you want to know what you're doing, meets the expectation. It's right there on the page for you. If you want to know a way to meet that expectation, there's another city and a contact person. Everything you need is right there. And then it's tracking your data online, which is fairly front-loaded for you as well. So, same thing with the, the resolution. As she mentioned, there's the different, sorry, areas that we fall into. And then what I did is I looked at the subcategories and said, where could we possibly fall? It didn't take the time to then run this through to the experts to say, would these things actually qualify? But it gave me an idea against what some other people are doing of where we might fall. So, for example, one of the subcategories is comprehensive planning and implementation. So building public support and legal validity to long-term infrastructural and regulatory strategy. So for example, working through a comp plan for two thousand and forty, we had committees including residents involved. So again, it's that outreach piece that we're talking about, but long-term infrastructure. Conservation design, so adapt development ordinances or processes that protect natural systems and value community assets. Some of the things that we're already doing are park fund, park fund, tree preservation and environmental enhancement fund, our hard cover and impervious surface restrictions that we already have in our ordinances, Wetland Conservation Act that we work with, as well as our setback requirements for lake shore bluffs as we're protecting those resources, which is unique somewhat to our community compared to others because of our so much footprint that we have. One of the other subcategories is urban forest, so adding city tree plant cover that increases community health, wealth, and quality of life. A lot of the pieces that fall under these subcategories and the best practices talk a lot about just improving life quality for our residents. We did the tree trust partnership. We do our public works planting that goes on in various stages. The Edelscop project with the additional landscaping and planting. So anything that allows us to increase our tree and plant cover. So those were just a couple of things that came up with. Parks and trails, we want to support active lifestyles and property values by enhancing the city's green infrastructure. Big piece of parks and trails is getting people outside. We talked a little bit earlier about amenities in our parks, those are things that fall into this. Right now, we're really assessing playground replacement upgrades, including the ground cover, trail maintenance to comply with the new requirement. So things that we're doing to increase the use of those. Solid waste reduction, so increased waste reduction, reuse, and recycling. A couple of examples of that, we spoke to this in the past, we're working, John at the front works and heads up our recycling grant. And there are certain levels of education that were required to provide that I work with her as communications person to do that, along with a lot of other events that she's expected to do. So we've got the city recycling day, we do waste recycling education in conjunction with Hennepin County as well. And then efficient and water wastewater, efficient water and wastewater facilities. So assess and improve the city's drinking water and wastewater systems and related facilities. Kind of goes unsaid with what we've been doing the last couple of years. But water tower maintenance falls into that, the water tower treatment plants being added in general. The updates that we're doing to the wellhouses as well as overhauls for efficiency. And then another best practice subcategory is efficient existing public buildings. So this was a more in-depth example I wanted to give you. So, as Diana mentioned, a big piece of this is benchmarking our energy use. So, benchmark energy usage, identifying saved seedings, opportunities in consultation with state programs, utilities and others, to benchmark cost-effective energy and sustainability improvements. So something that Public Works worked with, I believe was it SEH? Right. With Excel a few years back was looking at energy saving regarding running our natural gas generators at the water treatment plants to avoid electric energy consumption during those peak times, and what that looks like from a cost-saving standpoint. But the most recent was our external lighting assessment that was completed. I'm just gonna jump, and I don't know if we can zoom in a little on this at all, it's hard to see. But we had the opportunity, Gary did, with a free assessment from one of our utilities, which is what they ask us to do, which is reach out to these free resources to get these benchmarks. It was offered to us, we happened to take it up right about the same time that this was coming out. And what we looked at was the use of lighting in regards to all of our public buildings. And it would take about eighty-two, three-eighty, if you can see that under the cost analysis, about eighty-two thousand dollars to do everything that they recommended, okay, if we were wanting to do that. Doesn't mean we'd have to do it all at once, it's something that could happen over a period of time, or we could opt to do something else. But what I thought was interesting about this, what they provided to us, is what that in the long term would equal monthly savings, about fifteen hundred dollars. And it would take us, if you can see on the LED cost recovery line under cost analysis, about fifty-four months for us to start hitting that ROI piece that we talked about. When would we break even from this cost if we were to do it all upfront? When would we break even from that cost and start seeing savings, if we were to look at something like this? So again, my goal is just to give you a couple of examples of things we're already doing. Something that recently just happened to align with discussing this.
Just out of curiosity, and I'm sorry if I missed this. If it's free to the cities that participate, how is this funded?
So, participation itself is free, but then what we decide as a city or what you as a council decide to do in the way of best practices, then we would need to plan for spending within the budget, depending on what best practices you're wanting to do when.
But how is the organization Green Step Cities funded?
That's a great question.
Right. That is a question. So, as I said, it's a partnership, and, you know, the state agencies are funded the way the state agencies are funded generally. There's general appropriation from the legislature, and then there's lots of fees from the political agency, et cetera. A number of the nonprofits are funded either through foundation grants or other, you know, other aspects. So, it's, it's, you know, that aspect is privately funded through foundations mostly, for the, especially my position and others. So it's, yeah, it's not state money necessarily. Some of my time is actually funded through an assessment on utility, statewide utilities, because the work I do specifically is, I'm more than clear on clean energy versus sustainability broadly. And so my job is to help communities do clean energy projects, energy efficiency, solar, et cetera. And so, my job is to work with the eleven county metro area, help with that. So that's why I talk about benchmarking and energy savings and looking at those opportunities.
But it's primarily grants
Oh, yeah.
That sustain the organization.
Oh, yeah, for, for all of the nonprofits that are involved in it, so, yeah.
So it's not a part of the Hennepin County taxes or nothing like that?
No.
And then you had mentioned that we could make money doing this? Well, one of the examples that Cassandra pointed out, if you benchmark your utilities of what you're using, and then you figure out how you can reduce the cost of that. Maybe it's going from fluorescent lighting to, to LED lighting. And then you weigh, you can weigh it, you can say, well, if we do this, it's going to cost us to implement it, let's say, five thousand dollars, but we're going to save so much per month, and what is the return on the investment? How long does that take? So you can, you can run those analyses and figure out how much money you're going to save. Because once you are even, then you're just saving money after that.
The other thing I would say about that that isn't pointed out in that financial analysis is that the LED lighting lasts much, much longer. So there's actually a maintenance issue and savings as well, you know, for replacing light bulbs depending on how many lights you have, et cetera.
Sure.
Which we've seen in some places as a means, so.
So, Mayor and Council, I'll just kind of jump in here, Gary, you can kind of supplement if I missed something here. But the lighting assessment, I think, was the dollar amount was ninety thousand? I mean, we're not asking for that tonight, we don't have any budget for next year. So this is something that would be down the road. But I believe our energy costs are about thirty-three percent for our buildings are involved in lighting. So, that's a significant amount. And then as Cassandra talked about, you know, in fifty-four months, for what, four and a half years, you'd have your payback on that investment. And she also mentioned you wouldn't have to do it all at once. So, it's a fairly good payback on your investment where you'd save, you know, eighteen, I think it was eighteen thousand dollars in a calendar year?
Correct.
In, in lighting costs or efficiency, field efficiency, or dollars based on that. So, you know, the downstroke is ninety, but four and a half years, you're saving eighteen, after that first four and a half years, you're saving an additional eighteen thousand. That's just an example.
It's one example, exactly.
One example. And we're not, we're not asking for that tonight, or, you know, one of the things that Cassandra tried to point out in her little PowerPoint is some of the low-hanging fruit that we've already done or can get credit for as we move our way through this, this Green Step Cities, but, program. So, I don't know if you wanted to chime in at all on that, Gary, about the lighting?
I think you pretty much covered everything, and that, and that was for the entire city too. I mean, that's, you know, city hall, police department, and both the Polycorx buildings. So I mean, it was encompassing the whole entire campus, so, you know, I mean, that's the greater cost. So, you divide it up, you know, however you wanted to, and look at, they can divide it up in different areas for you too. But overall, I mean, it, it is something that, you know, can be looked at, so.
So anyhow, are there some other questions? We don't need to take action on it tonight, that's not what we're looking. It's just more information, and then we can bring it back to a work session for more discussion and more questions. It's a lot, a lot of information to kind of absorb in one night, so.
Could you put the PowerPoint out on the site, or send it to our emails?
Um, I can send it out.
We could definitely do that.
Yes, that's not a problem.
Yeah, good idea.
I can't read that.
Yeah. What?
It looked bigger on my computer screen.
Thank you. And thank you very much for coming and sharing this information with us. Really appreciate it. Thank you. So, that concludes our special presentations for this evening, and we'll move on to persons to be heard. We do have somebody signed up, so you'll have, I had to put my glasses on to make sure. Ron and Jennifer, both of you?
Yeah.
Okay. Groun, from Enchanted Lane, just please state your address for the record, and you'll have about three minutes. We may not take action on...
We don't need action.
Okay.
It was, so we're, Ron, Jennifer, Groun, thirty-eight...
Thirty-eight fifty Enchanted Lane on Enchanted Island. And we are here tonight because it occurred to me, an adage from some advice I was given once, where there's a road project going on in our island that has been going on over a year.
Right.
Our driveway, eighty-foot driveway is completely deconstructed, deconstructed and sitting on pallets in our driveway. And, you know, if you go into a restaurant, you order a meal, and a year later, you're waiting for the meal. Sometimes you need to go to the kitchen and find out what's taking so long. So, that's why we're here, we just want to stay visible and get the answers we need, like, when can we go back to normal? Because last winter was quite difficult with a torn-up driveway and plowing, et cetera, et cetera. And I also noticed on my, if I'm reading my tax statement correctly, we are already paying the assessment on this project starting this year, and it's not concluded.
Okay.
So, I just, I'm not upset with you, we're being very patient, but we just needed some answers. And Paul has been very good about filling us in on where we stand at this time, so, go ahead.
Okay.
That's it?
Well, maybe.
She said everything, we, we just want to
Find out.
Pay people's attention on that.
Sure, absolutely, and we appreciate that.
You're used to seeing it, and pretty soon, you're not seeing it anymore, and you just, no.
So, Mr. Hormi, do you, for our benefit, even if you've shared it with the Grouns, what is the time, timing on this and timeframe?
So we, as, as council is aware, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that the, we did resolve an issue, a negotiation with Matt Council to reconstruct the boat launch, that's been a negotiation for quite a while. And also some other costs associated with the project coming into twenty eighteen from twenty seventeen. So the next step is to negotiate a timeline to have contractors start work. And we're doing that now. Best indications we have now from the contractors being in mid-September, and...
And this is valley paving?
Valley paving, yeah.
Okay, to do the final wear course?
Uh, there's some minor grading, completing some driveways as the, the Grouns have indicated. And then reconstructing the boat launch, and then the final wear course paving.
Okay, so are they going to be doing the driveway before they do the final paving?
They would have, they would typically do the driveways first.
Okay.
And so they leave, they leave them up.
Right.
So that they match the final lift.
Okay, and do we have a schedule from, now is valley paving doing their driveway? Because their driveway isn't paved.
Correct, it's a paver driveway.
Right.
And it's part of the contract to do that, yes.
Okay, and do we have a date for that yet?
Not for the driveway. Specifically, I'm working on getting them out here. It looks like the second week. The seventeenth of September, I think, is the date.
But is that for their driveway?
That's to resume construction.
Okay, could you, could you do us a favor and find out when their driveway is going to be done?
I'm not going to have that kind of detail.
Oh.
I am not going to have that for a while. I'm trying to negotiate with the contractor to get them back out here. And the best indication I have now, because of what's on, what they have in their, on their workload, what I'm trying to do is get a timeline to get them back in. They just want to come in, resume construction and get it done.
Okay.
They're looking, you know, in that three to four weeks worth of construction. So coming in mid-September, I'd say this project would be done by mid-October. We did put together a resident memo and sent out to the entire mailing list on Tuxedo Road, Grandview Avenue, and Enchanted Lane. That went out today.
Okay. Well, keep us posted as well, because it's good for us to know and.
We just wanted you to know.
We're just the messiest part of the project.
Yeah, yeah.
The landing is much more messy than we are, but we're a messy part.
And where the Grouns' home is, that's the area in Enchanted Lane where we actually raised it.
We had to raise it, right, yeah.
And the road is draining.
Yeah, good. That's, that's a good thing. One good thing to be here.
If I could just make one second comments as I sit through your presentations. As a physician and a psychiatrist working in Minnetoka and in Monalva, in this community, I believe, or close to. The idea of having a place to get rid of drugs that are a problem would be fabulous. I bet I get asked once a week about those kind of things. And if we knew it was here, I'd at least have a place to send a few people. Be a nice thing.
Just to answer your question. You obviously know where the Sheriff's Boat Launch is.
Yes.
They have a drop-off facility right there.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, you just go in there, I've used it before actually, and just drop them off.
Perfect, thank you very much.
In Spring Park, yeah.
I appreciate your.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have consent agenda items. It's approve our work session meeting minutes from August sixth, twenty-eighteen. Approve our regular meeting minutes from August sixth, twenty-eighteen. And a resolution to approve claims. Resolution to approve the status change from probationary to full-time for Anisha Mueller, who is our customer service and communications assistant. And a resolution to order amended recreational vehicles ordinance regarding golf carts. And then, of course, to authorize publication of ordinance number four fifty-four by title and summary.
I'd like to remove item C, please.
Approve claims, okay.
And I'd like to remove item A, the work session minutes.
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, that remains the regular meeting, okay, I'm sorry, you said A, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that remains B, D, E, and F.
Some of.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda items B, D, E, and F. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So we will take A first. Okay.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, on page four of the work session minutes, there is a statement that just says Bruce commented that she would be okay with a four and a half percent increase, but nothing more than that. I'd just like to put that a little bit in context, because it sounds like I'm advocating a tax increase. And I'd just like to put in front of that, in regard to the proposed six-point-seven-two percent or five percent increase, Bruce commented that she would be okay. Because taking that out of context, it just sounds like I'm advocating an increase out of the blue. And I wasn't.
Well, we'd have to, so I understand what you're saying. But when we do the minutes, they do have to reflect what was actually said? And because we can't say, well, she meant, do you know what I'm saying?
No, but, but, or you can put more of what I said there. You can, you can put the three or four sentences that I said before that. If you don't want to put in regard to the proposed tax levy increases, I responded, I was commenting about the higher levy proposed by staff.
Mayor and council, with our clerk out tonight, I think what we will do then is, she'll be back tomorrow, I believe, correct? Wednesday?
Wednesday.
She's back Wednesday. So we'll have her review the video of it and we'll see what we can come up with that reflects your intent, but also satisfies the fact that you can't record intent, you can only say what was said. So if it takes us longer, we'll try.
Well, but you say things all the time, like there was discussion about cloud-based services. You could say this was in response to a discussion about the proposed.
Yep, we'll say something that reflects what you're after without, like putting.
Yeah, I just want to be careful that, because I mean, I know, sure, you said that.
We don't want to put words in your mouth, things that you didn't say we can't put in there, but we can try to find a balance in there that reflects what you wanted to say there.
So what we'll do is we'll bring these minutes back at our next regular meeting. So then, next, claims, that's number C, Mr. Malater.
First of all, on page twelve, the resolution states a dollar amount of a million thirteen, five twelve spot six five. But at the very end of the list, the dollar amount is nine forty-three, three six five, point six nine. So just, clerk, what is the actual amount?
It's, it's just the payroll for the last period. It's pretty much, I mean, if we want, we could, I think this question maybe came up once before. We could add that. Because basically, these are the transactions that are physical checks or wires or whatever, but our payroll, like our ACH. It's the difference, the nine forty-three to the ten thirteen is just our payroll ACH for the last period. It's like seventy thousand dollars or something.
And they're not checks?
No, it's just an ACH into everything.
So everything else on here is a check?
It's either a check or a wire, correct. Or, or a deposit, or payroll tax deposit. I mean, for clarification, what we could do for the future is maybe, what we can pull out of our system is basically that nine forty-three, the seventy thousand's just our regular bi-weekly payroll or whatever. So we could notate that in the resolution, just for reconciliation purposes, I guess, if that helps. But that's basically what the difference is.
Yeah, I mean, I think just, you know, the accountant finance person, I mean, we're going to reconcile and tie.
Yeah.
And right now it doesn't. So I just want it tied.
Yeah.
What we authorize ties to what's on the list.
Okay.
If we need to have a note in here saying the difference is payroll for a certain period.
Yeah, we can just add on page twelve, I think includes electronic transfers for payroll. Because sometimes we have, you know, depending if there's a gap between meetings, sometimes we have one payroll, sometimes we have two. So, so that we can just, includes electronic transfers for payroll, and then say seventy thousand in parentheses behind it or something.
Sure.
And that plus the nine forty-three would be the ten thirteen. That, that's fine, yeah, we can do that.
That would be just to understand, just to make sure we're capturing everything.
Yeah.
Just from, you know, diagnosing and crossing the Ts.
That makes sense.
The other item that I had questions about, and this is for Gary actually, we've got combined about fifteen thousand in fire hydrant repair. There's, I think, was about six thousand to one vendor, about nine thousand to another. Well, what's, what's that all about?
Every year we repair and replace hydrants. This year we have two that were replaced, along with a few gate valves. And we are also redoing internally fourteen different fire hydrants in the north end of town. It involves dismantling the whole thing, taking the entire guts of it out and replacing the seals and the shafts and all that. So that is all parts for that. A lot of the expense went to a dig on Game Farm Road. We were, in the process for the school, we had to shut off some water for them for supply. And while shutting it off, due to the hot soils, unbeknownst to us, we shut the valve off and the top nut rotted away. We could not turn the valve back on. It's the looping valve that goes around. So we have to do a dig for that. So we ordered a new valve for that and a new hydrant for that that was leaking. So that's on there too. And what we found out was, long story short, the two-way water line that they pulled in years ago was right underneath the original, well, one outwater line. So we ended up having to relocate the valve and do a lot of, I mean, this was sixteen-foot deep digs. So it was a lot of, a lot of expense just for that. But that involved three new valves there, a new hydrant there. And then we also, like you say, we're doing, in the process of doing fourteen different hydrants repairs along the road. So we do them every year, just this year we ended up having to do a lot more. What happens is, over time, the hydrants don't turn as easy and operate as they should. They're not sealing tight. So basically, the entire guts of it is removed, new seals are put in, all new shafts. We're going to a heavier shaft, as Paul can attest to, especially with the deeper hydrants. As they go, they start to actually, can actually twist and turn them and break them. So we're going to a stronger rated shaft and stuff, so. But that's, yeah, there's a lot of expense this time around, because we're doing so many hydrants up there this year. So normally, it's not that bad. I mean, we normally do about five to six a year. This year we just have a lot of them in the north end that need to get redone.
Okay. Just want the note to stick out. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions on the claims?
No, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, are, if you're okay with that, are you going to make a motion to approve?
I'll recommend the motion that we approve the claims as, as noted.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Malater made the motion and Ms. Mortensen seconded. Any further questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we move on to our business items. Our first business item is the purchase of a variable frequency drive for well two A. Is that Mr. Peters again?
That would be me, Madam Mayor. Council, this came into effect when the North Water Treatment Plant, we finally got all our programming done. And the way it was set up was that treatment plant was going to be served by well one and well two A. The way the plant was set up, well two A is not the perfect water, but the medium that was put, the media that was put into the filters was specifically put in for both of them to run together as well as separately. So that when well one is under their seven to ten-year repair schedule, well two A can run and vice versa. But normally, they'll run together, just like six and seven run together to combine water for the salt treatment plant. Somewhere along the way, it was overlooked that well two A did not have a variable frequency drive startup. What this does is it ramps the motor up slowly, instead of a cross-the-line starter, which just kicks in just like that. So what happens is it overfloods the, as it comes to the treatment plant, both the aerator and the detention tank cannot handle the influx flow so fast, because it needs that time to, to get into the filters. So basically, we went out, we kind of talked to S E H at the time. Chris, what, what kind of, what are we looking for? What would be the best drive to put in there? And he came up and let us know with this one that we, the Allen Bradley that we specked out, he said it's a very good one. So we asked him, what companies should we look for? Total Control was one that they've used. We use Automatic Systems. So we had them price the exact same piece of equipment. So we know exactly across the board what we're getting along with, anything that needs to be installed, the services, the training and all that. So that's where we come up with the price differences, very, very little. I mean, twenty thousand, seven forty-seven for Total Control S compared to twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-six for Automatic Systems. Without this, well two A pretty much would not be functioning well. So we would not be able to run this. So we definitely need this, because well one is scheduled for a rehab coming up here the next year or two. It has not been done since it's been installed. So it's going to be time for that to be taken offline, so well two A can run. And vice versa, once, you know, this one can be serviced at, you know, somewhere down the road too. So well two A has not been used very much in the past. So it is a, it is a well with, the water is not the greatest water if you're going to just pump it directly. But since the treatment plant is designed to filter this water, it'd be nice to get it online. So, and the programming is set up now. We had some issues with it to start with, just like six and seven. But all the programming is set now and ready to go. And that's why we've noticed that this incident came up, so. So what we're looking for is, you know, basically for a resolution to purchase one and get it installed and get it up and running.
I have, I have a couple of questions. The, the wells in the south, in the south treatment plant, do they have VFDs?
Correct, they, but they are brand-new and were put in with the treatment plant. We're using two existing wells here that were looked at to begin to, to add to this, so.
And, and you mentioned that somewhere along the line it was overlooked, that this VFD was overlooked and not put on well number two. Who overlooked that?
Back in the day when it was originally put in, I don't believe they ever thought about putting one in, so. And it was not looked at, I guess, at the time a treatment plant was put in, so.
Well, number one has it?
Well, number one does have one, yes, because that was our primary well.
And all the south treatment water plant wells have them.
Correct.
So why, I'm trying to understand why it wasn't put on well number two.
I do not know, that was installed before my time here. So I'm not exactly certain why that was not put in, so.
When was that well online?
That one, I believe, was two thousand nine or two thousand ten, that one, when it eventually got rehabbed.
That was two thousand ten, because we did a PFA loan in two thousand ten.
Then it would have been, that's when it would have gone online.
Wasn't that just a backup for well number one?
It was at the time.
Right.
And so, but now, you know, since, you know, we will be taking out, so we.
And it was pre-water treatment plant? And the other thing is, you don't, you don't necessarily need a variable, right, if, if the wall, water is just being pumped into the water tower?
Correct, if it's just pumped directly into the line like it was, it was not needed at that time.
Right, so that's maybe why it wasn't done.
It, it does save, I mean, it will be, in the long run, they do help, even on that, to ramp it up slowly, you're not just starting off like gangbusters. It's going to, you know, make the life of your pump last longer also. But at that time, it was probably looked at, hey, we don't need it as a secondary, you know, add-on well, so.
Okay, well, that's what I was trying to understand is.
Yeah, it was just, but you know, in the process, I don't think anybody ever looked into it when they were building the treatment plants, hey, we need one on there, because, you know, it wasn't looked at in the, in the past as needed, so.
Okay.
And they just, people thought that it was on there and it wasn't.
Yeah, okay.
So Gary, is there any, for the existing one that's in place, the pump, is there any, did they reuse that or what happens to the existing one?
The pump itself hasn't changed. This is, all this is, is just added on to, to, it's basically to engage, like, a slower pace, to ramp it up slower.
So it doesn't actually.
Yeah, so it doesn't just kick in at full, full board speed right away. It ramps it up slowly to, to, yeah.
Okay.
And one more question. Is it possible to take the VFD off of number one and put it on number two when number one is getting re?
No, they're specifically geared for that, because these both, wells would both run at the same time to blend the water together. That was what it was specifically designed for.
Okay.
So, I mean, each one would have its own, because there's a lot of programming and wiring involved in these. So, yeah, it'd be, it'd be a lot of work to do that.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, staff is recommending or requesting approval to purchase the variable frequency drive. And I'm assuming in the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars?
Correct.
Through, I think that was the Automatic Systems?
Yes.
Okay.
And they are our prime contractor, like I stated in here too, that they have done all our SCADA upgrades. And they are the primary programmer for the treatment plants as well. So we've worked with them in the past, they've been very well to work with, as, as is Total Control. But they've just been our, you know, just happen to be that they're just a little bit cheaper, so.
Right. Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay, is there, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Malater and seconded by Mr. Chumperland to approve the purchase of the variable frequency drive for well number two A. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we move on to the Hennepin County Snowplow Agreement.
Who is? Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is to, this is item two for council consideration, approve a county road maintenance agreement. It actually has four snowplows, and it's for county road forty-four during the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen winter season. With the construction of the Met Council mound interceptor improvements, the second phase of the project will, or the third phase of the project um, the second phase of the project will, uh, the third phase of the project will, um, be boring underneath Priest Bay, uh, that channel. So that bridge will be closed, so that whole, that area of county road forty-four will be closed. So you can either go north from the bridge or go south.
Okay, are they gonna be doing that in the winter?
Yes.
Because for some reason or another, I had heard that they were gonna be doing the construction season, during the construction season. Then they were gonna be stopping, and then the road would be open during the winter, and then they'd start again in the spring.
It'll be, it'll be closed at the bridge.
Oh.
I think it's still on the faceboard out here in the hallway.
Okay.
So the, um, so what ends up happening is the, for the county to plow, county road forty-four, they have to make a circuitous trip around and then come back out county road forty-four rather than driving through.
Right.
And so they've asked both, I believe the city of Mound was asked if they could plow the area north of, um, the, the bridge, and they've also asked the city of Minutrista if they could plow the area south of the bridge. So the county, um, what they do is they went through and figured a three-year running average for plowing, uh, county state highways. And then they would offer up to the city, um, their average cost for, for doing that maintenance work. So in this case, uh, what they're offering for four lane miles of, of roadway, um, so this would be from the Priest Bridge, South Highway seven. Uh, eighty-six hundred and fifty-five dollars is for five months of service from November fifteenth through April fifteenth. Uh, that's November fifteenth, twenty eighteen, to the April fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Breaks down about seventeen hundred and thirty-three dollars a month, and, um, uh, the county has put together an agreement. The agreement has been reviewed, uh, by staff and also by the city's insurer. Uh, there have been a couple of minor modifications to the agreement, which the county has complied with. And this time, staff recommends approval of resolution one sixteen dash eighteen to approve the county road maintenance agreement for snow plowing county roads forty-four. And that's just for the one winter season. Uh, if, if there's a snow event that occurs prior to November fifteenth or after April fifteenth, either the county would end up plowing it or they have to compensate the city more for plowing it outside of those days.
Okay. Or if there's just a whole lot more snow, then we end up picking up the tab.
Yeah, but the converse of that, Mayor, council is if there's a whole lot less snow, we're gonna make good money. And I believe, uh, talking with, uh, Mr. Peters about this is that he was kinda surprised that the dollar mile was as good as it was when we got this. And the other thing to note is we have a number of city streets that we have to plow anyway. Driving down that road to get to those streets, these guys would just drop the plow a little sooner before. So it's really not gonna save us any money to, uh, bicker with Henham County because we're going through there anyway. Which is why they asked us, so. And, you know, we have had a really pretty decent relationship with the county, and, you know, if we end up on the short end or they end up on the short end of this, I'm sure somebody's gonna remember it. It's like, to come to some other item in the future, so. Um, but it's been a pretty good relationship, just like we had with Met Council. We reduced the dollar mile for the Enchanted Tuxedo Project, and they were, they were good about it because they realized we have a good partnership with them, so. So yeah, we could come up behind, but these guys will be, they just have the plow a little longer instead of picking up while they drive down the county road.
Okay.
I don't know if that's fine, Gary, with what you guys said, I mean.
We have no issue with it. Like you say, we, we end up plowing it most of the time anyways. I mean, it gets such drifting through there, so we're almost always going through there, dropping our plows anyways, because by the time we call them and have that come out, it's just easier for us to go through there. And, um, Mike Pollock is our plow guy for that area, and he normally drops his blades anyways on it and just goes from street to street. We, you know, that's the way it, I mean, it's, it's just, I mean, every city does that. They get to a county road, they leave their plows down and turn the block. It's not a big issue to help out, so.
Okay.
We're good with this.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
But we'll track it and see what happens.
Yeah. All right. Um, is there a motion to approve the, uh, road maintenance agreement for plowing for, um, twenty eighteen, nineteen winter season?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Chumperland made the motion and Ms. Bruce seconded. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. So our next one is, uh, receive quotes and reject the I N I reduction improvement for three eighteen.
Uh, Mayor and members of the council, uh, we did receive quotes for the, um, I N I reduction improvement project, and, um, basically the quote, we've received one quote. Uh, it came in at double the budget that we have for it. The, actually, the quote that went out had two things in it. It had lining, mostly in the northeast part of the city, and it also had some, uh, repair of a partial collapse of a sewer, and that would have been an excavation. There are two totally different construction items, so we haven't included all of them the same. So, um, we did get one quote, and actually, they're both, they're both high, and I have been working with one of the suppliers, uh, for the one quote received to see how we can bring that down. But with the, uh, quote received and with the budget we have, we're recommending to reject bids. Just as a comparison, um, compared to similar projects bid in twenty seventeen, the costs as quoted were, um, forty-five to sixty-eight dollars per foot higher for this quote. So I'm trying to find out why that is. I think there's two things, is that we had, um, three or four short liners, and theirs, they were telling me it could be cheaper to line the whole pipe. And so some of these short liners are ten feet long to forty feet long. And then the other part of it was the timeline to get it done. So it was to be done this fall. We had one vendor call, so I wanna know if they could, um, started in December. And I thought, well, I don't think that's on the timeline that the city wanted it done, so we didn't change that date. Uh, we do have, um, in our office, we do have a number of communities. It's generally led by Taka Bay that does a project that's generally bids in December. I believe this year, like, you Taka Bay, Shorewood, and Excelsior bidding some lining work. I would recommend that we put this information into, just the lining portion into the, into that bid package and rebid it.
Well, my question was, um, so this is on, um, Lakeview, um, over in Lakeview, and/or Shady?
No.
No, what's the next item?
Oh, okay, I thought that was, this was the, um, I N I, I thought, okay.
I don't know, it's just a forced main break.
Okay.
It's the next item.
Well, how are we gonna do this? I mean, if it's a forced main break?
That's not this.
This not, this is, this isn't part of this project.
Okay.
This is separate of the north end of town for I N I leakage into the, into the sanitary sewer.
Okay, did we check on the grant from Met Council?
Uh, the city of Minutrista is not an eligible city.
We're ineligible?
We're not eligible because we aren't on their surcharge list. So what the, what the Met Council does.
Yeah, that's right.
Is they put a surcharge fee on your wastewater.
Yeah.
And they take those surcharge fees, put them in a fund, and then you can apply for a grant to get some of those dollars back when you do some of your I N I reduction. Doesn't mean you're gonna get all of the surcharge back directly, but you, you.
But if you're a city that does your I N I reduction on its own, you don't qualify for the grants. Yeah, I think we talked about this one.
Yes, correct.
Yeah. It's like, shouldn't we get a grant because we're good? It's a good city?
Well, you would think so. We did look into that before, and, um, Mike and I had some correspondence back and forth about that this morning.
Okay.
So we just simply weren't on the list. Uh, we prefer that we're not on the list because that kinda ties your hands as well, like, forces you into some other things. The city's been proactive, and I think we should, in putting the, actually, this year, I'm putting together the wastewater plan. We have to identify how we're gonna ident, how we're gonna take care of I N I and we can do that, so.
Okay, so you're, you're recommending that we bid this out with the other communities in December? And then the work would be done when?
Uh, they, uh, last year, they did it in January, February, and I think they ran it through into April.
Okay, all right.
That would just be the lining part. The open cut would be done separately.
Open, the open cut, I would recommend that we just bid that through Public Works as a separate project altogether.
For two thousand nineteen?
Correct.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to, um, receive the quotes and reject, uh, the I N I reduction improvements.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second then.
Okay, um, Ms. Bruce made the motion and Ms. Mortensen seconded. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes five oh. And then we'll see that back again, or will you just automatically put that out for a bid?
Uh, we'll just have that, we'll just work with Taka Bay included in their bid package, and then, um, with their action, well, similar to what we've done on the Seal Co project, each city has its own schedule.
Okay.
And so the city can reject or, or not.
Okay, so we'll see this back again, probably December sometime, okay. Okay, now, approve, um, proposal for professional services for preliminary design, lift station, seven force main replacement project, et cetera. All right.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a, um, a proposal just to do some preliminary, uh, design services to do layout, and, uh, well, the layout is pretty much fixed, but to look at the methodology in which to, um, replace this force main. We looked at, uh, we're, we're gonna look at three alternatives. One would be directional boring a new force main, somewhere along the alignment of the existing one, and then, uh, uh, cut it into the, into the, uh, lift station system and to the Met Council line downstream. Uh, the other one would be to just, uh, what they call, um, pipe bursting. Uh, we dropped that scope services because in reviewing just a recent project we bid, the pipe bursting costs are much higher, um, than directional boring a new force main. So we thought, does not even consider that. So the other alternative we looked at would be, um, going through is the traditional open trench excavation of, of the force main or replacing, putting a new one in alongside the existing one. Part of that is with the street improvement project, you have a street improvement, a restoration of the street, along with the force main improvement. So there's two ways to look at this. We can look at just one of those items if you'd like, or we can still look at both of them. I know there was some question on the street conditions, Margaret Circle, uh, Shady Lane.
Shady, right, in Lakeview, right. They're horrible. Um, so that was, so that was my question. So if you do an open cut and you, you replace the force main in the sewer line there, then, and then you, you restore or do a, a road project along with it, at least part of those costs come out of the sewer fund. Maybe then, I don't know what the percentage is, but maybe then the other portion of the road project could come out of, could be part of our, our road projects that we do next year, and then there would be special assessments, of course, too. But at least then we could get the roads done at, at a fraction of the cost.
And so it would be, it would be, um, one way of getting to that point, yes, is doing it with the force main project.
Right. I mean, it doesn't seem to need to make sense to dig up the road and patch it.
Question, question on this here. Um, is your experience, just generally speaking, open trench being more cost-effective versus directional boring? Or other way around, or?
Actually, overall project costs are very similar cost. The benefit of a trenchless or a directional boring is more convenience to your patrons or the residents.
You're not disturbing the road.
The other benefit to it versus an open trench by boring, uh, boring a force main is that, uh, you don't get that differential settlement over a trench over time. Uh, but that is one of the reasons why we do have a utility project like Lotus Drive, for instance. Um, we'll let that pay, we'll put the base course on, then the first lift that we tune is, we'll let it sit until next year.
Right.
Kinda go through a frost cycle so we can repair any of those settlements. So it's kind of typical for road construction, and so we have to do it that way. But that's one of the advantages of not digging it up, you know, the entire length is trying to lose that differential settlement.
But you still end up doing open cuts where you've got curves that you can't bore through.
Right.
So it's not true.
Every, every single, every place that you'd have a ninety-degree bend, uh, that's definitely at one point where you'd be digging up the roadway.
So then you'd be patching.
And at the construction areas and, you know, at the connection area to the force, to the lift station and to the Met Council line. We'd be digging that area up too. And that would just be a patch.
Um, Shady Lane and Lakeview Drive, where are they at in our priority list?
They're not on them.
They're, they're currently not in our five-year plan.
They're not in the five-year plan.
But I looked at the, at the Shady Lane, um, Lakeview's a little hard because it was broken up in three sections. But I looked at pavement management plan, and it's got a PCI fifty-five point nine. Next suggested action was mill and overlay, and with a PCI fifty-five point nine, I'm not confident that would be mill and overlaying. Pretty sure it'd probably be reconstructed.
And that's where we fell into, fell into that line where we'd have to court to see what kind of condition the pavement is. But I'm just looking at Bing on Street View and it's, it's patch from one end to the other for the most part in there. And so it's probably more of a reclamation or remove the pavement, put, you know, supplement class five and repaint it.
Well, see, I know we have to fix the force main. I understand that. But I don't wanna spend money on fixing the force main and then leaving the road the way it is because it's gonna be even worse than it is. I think we're just gonna have some terribly mad residents. If they're, they're gonna say, well, if you're digging the road up and, and doing this work, why don't you just do the road? Because the road is almost nonexistent right now, I mean, in terms of the, the condition that it's in. So I don't know if, if this, I don't wanna kick the can down the road, but should this be part of our discussion when we do the road, uh, when we discuss the roads for next year?
Yeah, that was my.
I, I'm not, I'm wondering, I mean, timing-wise?
It certainly could be. Uh, I, I think if you're looking at this area and doing a road improvement project, it's probably a twenty-twenty project, you know, after the county road forty-four.
Right, right. But so then the question is, can this lift station and this force main make it to twenty-twenty?
Well, so we've had three breaks in, in the last year and a half, and I think two of those breaks were within a week.
No, within two days.
Within two days, okay.
Okay, so what, is there any temporary fix?
Well, the temporary fix you've had so far is they excavate down and put a temporary clamp or put a repair clamp on the break.
So, okay, you say twenty-twenty because of county road forty-four?
Right.
Why?
Well, so if you, if you, now, it looks a lot better today, but if you drove past county road forty-four in one-ten and looked either north or south when you're in construction there, trying to get equipment, paving trucks, all that kinda thing into a city street would be very difficult to move through their construction zone. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna be a good way to, to stage that, do it in twenty nineteen. Because isn't that the?
That's a section.
That's the section that's being done in nineteen, yes.
Yeah.
So, yes. Yeah, between this day and.
Okay, well, if we connect this to county road, because I assume this, the Met Council connector is what they're working on right now. So are we gonna have to dig up a force main county road forty-four to connect it?
No. No, this is just in Shady Lane, yeah, part of Lakeview.
So when were you thinking of doing this work? What, what's the timeline?
Well, it could be nineteen or twenty to do the force main, or if it's gonna be, is it gonna be tied in with the road project, then I would say it'd be twenty-twenty. But at least try and put some cost together, one way or another, using a budget, budgetary number to work with for the project. Which is why we put the proposal together, which we did.
Okay, so what you're saying is this work wouldn't be done until at least twenty nineteen?
Correct.
Even, even if we didn't do a road project?
Correct.
It'd be next year, yes.
We, we would wanna do the plans here over, you know, December, January to get them out, get them out the door for.
Well, this is what I'm gonna, this is where I'm at. I don't know where you're gonna. I'd like to talk about this in conjunction with our road discussion that we're hopefully gonna have, what, next, next work session?
Yeah, next, it's gonna happen.
So, I mean, that way, I think it, we have to, I mean, we have to look at this.
Yeah. And that's fine.
Okay.
Do we can bring this back at the end of the?
And, okay, I, I just wanna make sure I understand what we're actually, I, I agree with that, but I do wanna understand what we're actually buying here. Because if we're buying an analysis to determine whether we're gonna do trenchless or trish, or open, I don't think we need that analysis. Something we could probably decide that we're gonna do the trenching because it just, we're, we're gonna tear up the road.
If we do the road, then you might as well do the trenching.
Right, so then why even, what, we don't need to do with this analysis?
That's kind of, but that's.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's what I'm saying.
Do one or the other or both, so, just, just depending on what your pleasure was, I guess, is the question is. If you wanna include the street projects, then we just look at open cutting it.
And that's why I said we need to discuss the road project, the road issues first, and then if it's part of the road construction in twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty, then we wait and we do the open, so, to your point. Okay, all right, so we'll discuss this along with our road issues, okay. Um, and then, let's see, was there? That concludes our business items. Do you need a motion on, on that? So we're just gonna bring it back.
Yeah, I'll just bring, bring it back if. Yeah, I'll just bring, bring it back at the next decision.
Okay. All right. So that concludes our business items. We will now move on to staff reports. I'm gonna start with Mr. Abel first.
Okay.
I know, I know.
Might as well be quick. There is not a planning commission meeting this month, so we, there's some pending items, but they weren't complete for this meeting, so there is no meeting this month, so no, no, no.
All right. I know, I knew that's all he had. Okay, I'll, I'll volunteer for this month's fight. All right. Mr. Barone, now you.
Thank you. Um, just a few items to discuss. Uh, first of all, our next meeting is after the Labor Day holiday, so don't show up here on Monday, September third. Please come on Tuesday, September fourth, that's holiday, and the third. We did have three people apply for, for the city council. Uh, that deadline was Tuesday, August fourteenth. We have Pam Mortson, John Schupperlin, and also Mr. Elroy Bogart. Those three applied. We did hold, as we've done the last number of election cycles, candidate forum on Wednesday, August fifteenth, at three-thirty in the afternoon. Uh, Mr. Schupperlin, uh, because of travel, yep, wasn't able to make it, uh, so it was an informational thing. So both Pam and Elroy made it, and Chris, Luke, Chris and I went through that, and kinda talked a little bit about how the city runs and what all the requirements are for running for office. Then a final item, I just wanna let the council know that we did, once again, postpone the Scott Qualley Conciliation Court meeting. Um, it's now on October third, uh, at ten AM, and I won't go into all the details of it, but when we found out the referee, not judge, but the referee that was assigned to this particular case, we're trying to maximize our opportunity to be successful in this particular hearing, and we felt like that maybe wasn't gonna, that particular referee wasn't gonna give us the, I think, I guess, the fairest of chances. So we asked for a replacement. We were willing to keep the same exact date, but that wasn't possible through the calendar. We got one on October third. Uh, this won't jeopardize our chances of being successful, I don't believe, in any way, shape, or form. I don't know if Mr. Beatty would like to talk about that particular item, but I don't think it's gonna hurt us anything moving it. So we just felt a lot better about trying our chances with a different referee than the one we initially got assigned, so. So that's all I have. I know I'm gonna ask Mr. Hornby to talk about, I was gonna ask him to talk about two road projects, but he sort of covered, there in persons, we heard about the Enchanted Tuxedo Project, so if you wanna talk a little bit about Halsted Drive.
So we have our concrete subcontractors on site. They're redoing the roundabout, the Center Island. Yeah, so they cut out the old curb and they're putting in forms for not only the center roundabout median, but they're all median curb. They're also putting the forms in for the splitter islands, so there's a total of four medians in the roundabout.
So there are approach medians?
There's three on the approaches, one on, one on Farm Hill, uh, going north, north and southbound, and then one in the east-west and north-south direction for Halsted Drive. So each approach has a median. The medians are put in with the curb that is supposed to be drive-over type, and that's one of the reasons we had to remove the center median, because it didn't meet the curb spec. So they removed that, and they're putting that back in. The schedule I have right now is that they'll be pouring tomorrow somewhere around seven AM. They've got, uh, concrete plant inspection set up for that.
So I was out there today, and, um, so just kind of for clarification, so the approaches, they'll, there's a flat area of concrete that will be the same level as the asphalt, right? And so the total, if you will, driving area before you go over the island is, what, twelve, thirteen feet approximately? So right now, it looks really narrow, because they're not poured, and there's big holes, if you will. Their, their forms are there. Um, and then the other thing is, there's a mailbox that maybe needs to be moved.
Yes, there's a segment of, um, Farm Hill Drive that has not been widened out to the full width-
Okay.
-on the approach, and the contractor's aware of it, and after talking to Mayor today, also sent a text message reminding him of that, and that mailbox had to be moved, so he's aware of it.
Okay. And so he, they're saying they're gonna be out there tomorrow pouring?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I think they worked Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
They didn't. They were not out on Saturday. They were out on Friday, and they were out yesterday. And, you know, the concrete contractors out there sawing the pavement by hand, they didn't have a walk behind saw, so that was a lot of work for some laborers. Uh, and then, um, our prime contractor said they would be out, um, on Tuesday through Friday, or they said Tuesday through the rest of the week. They would work out the list of items that we had provided them.
So how soon can people then, so I'm thinking in terms of boats and trailers, how soon are they, can they actually drive around that roundabout then?
The, well, two things. Uh, people are finding creative ways not to use it, returning around trailers, um, for, for one. They're turning around everywhere but that intersection, it would appear. But the, uh, they're gonna want to have traffic not on the curb for about five days.
So will people, and I'm, I, I got a call from a resident, so, just so you know. So i- if people have trailers that they're taking out a Farm Hill, and they need to go around that roundabout this weekend, if they wanna go camping or something, then what's gonna happen?
I did, I did also let the contractor know that they'll have to accommodate that.
Okay.
Which probably means backfilling behind some curb somewhere and letting the people over, so. So the center medians are poured, and, you know, the splitter islands, but they can drive to the outside of it, provided that mailbox gets moved.
Okay. All right, just so that they can have in and out. Plus, that would also be an issue for, you know, emergency vehicles, I would think, so, all right.
Definitely get that big four-wheeler in there, the, the P D head on display at that intersection.
Thank you, Paul.
So what's the rest of the schedule look like then?
Well, in, last year, they were, last week, they're telling us they thought they'd be paving, have the paving crew on Wednesday, but I don't see that happening this week. I see paving maybe being a week later.
And then what else?
That's, that would be the-
That's it then?
Last big thing other than, than punch list items. The, the list of items that we gave the contractor are items that we know need to be corrected or completed, yeah. Uh, they plan to have that work done this week, by the end of the week. So I, I was gonna say Friday, but you didn't say Friday, you said end of the week, so it could be Friday or Saturday.
Okay, we'll see.
Yeah, we've been doing the we'll see thing, so we've, we've had a prompt of her go tomorrow, I wanna say, in the last few weeks, but they've started to do a little bit better job of doing what they're saying they're gonna do, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else?
So, that's all I have.
As long as we're on updates, road updates, uh, are there one, okay, never mind.
We're calling discussion, don't forget it.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe, Mike, I should mention the council. There was a, um, Met Council meeting last week for the County Road Forty-four, the next phase, the Phase Two, which would put them down in the regional park. I think what happened, and if you get calls on this, um, some of the residents and tenants heard Lotus Drive and through the regional park. I don't think the Met Council understood that Lotus Drive is west of County Road Forty-four, and Shady Lane is east of County Road Forty-four. So they're hearing that they're not gonna be done going through the regional park until twenty-twenty. So they're thinking the road torn up on Lotus Drive, some of them were, uh, isn't now gonna be done until twenty-twenty. I have emailed a couple of, um, residents who've sent emails into the city to staff, and have afforded on to me, and said, oh, this is what's happening. The road is supposed to be completed here in September for Lotus Drive.
Okay.
So, in case you get calls, it sounds like there's a misunderstanding of what was Lotus Drive and what was Shady Lane.
All right. Good to know. Okay, with that, um, council reports. Mr. Schupperlin, we'll start with you.
Uh, two things. I attended the National Night Out and rode along with Officer White. We stopped at Three, Kings Point, Woodland Cove, and North Saunders. Kings Point was just getting started, and that's at the end of the cul-de-sac there, so there wasn't many people around. Uh, Woodland Cove, lots of people, lots of kids, but they're spread all over the place, because it's at the-
Clubhouse.
The pool and the area there, and then at, uh, North Saunders, that was more of, I guess, kind of what I've expected. It was later, plus everybody was there, and was in a driveway, and, uh, and so it was nice. Uh, the Mountain Fire was at North Saunders, St. Bonnie Fire was at Woodland Cove while we were there. They were gonna be heading down to Kings Point. I told them, they're probably gonna have trouble getting in there, because there was cars parked around the cul-de-sac, and that's a pretty tight turn there, already as it is, so. But that was, it was a good night, it was good weather.
It was a beautiful night.
Uh, last week was Pioneer Sarah Creek. The one thing there that kind of affects me or us is, Bowser presented their draft of the performance of the, the watershed. Rated them very high, made a couple of recommendations, one of which, uh, most of us, all of us, were enthused about, I myself. Uh, they proposed that the staff needed to come up with a training manual and an orientation process. And not only for new members, but then a second part of that was ongoing, uh, as policies change, et cetera. And staff acknowledged that they were already in the process of doing that, so I looked at to be a benefit, at least for me.
Yeah. Yeah, I know they made a lot of cuts, um, in bygone years, and so I think that kinda went by the wayside for a while.
Well, they talked about this three-ring binder, and I know I- And, and no one professes to having one, so. So that was it.
Yeah, okay. Good job. Thank you. Ms. Bruce?
And I don't have anything.
All right. Mr. Malater?
Um, LMCD, uh, we had a discussion regarding fees. There's some hesitation as to the direction to take, so it's been tabled, but not, uh, not indefinitely. So we will be coming back to that subject again to figure out our approach.
Okay. And, Martinson?
Yes, I attended the National Night Out with Officer Jesse Schmidt, and we went to Turtle Creek and Hunter's Crest. Turtle Creek also was just starting when we got there. Um, they were serving root beer floats, and there was a fire truck there, and I got to shoot the fire hose, a few kids. It was pretty fun. Uh, Hunter's Creek was very well attended, uh, tons of emergency vehicles, ambulance, uh, it was, it was great. There were so many hot dogs, and, yeah, very well attended, and spoke to a lot of residents there as well. Uh, W C C meeting is on Thursday at Surfside, and I just wanted to comment on the, um, uh, medicine bags, um, being collected over at the Sheriff's Water Patrol. I don't think a lot of people know that.
Yeah, maybe put that in our, on the website or in our newsletter.
Um, there are two disposal methods. The bags, I believe, are designed to be, when you put your medication in there, designed to allow you to put the medication in the trash. Uh, they have some, at least, if it's the bags I'm thinking of, they have something in, some chemical in the bag that breaks the pills down. The site, and I think we talked about that here at some point, um, the site at the Water Patrol is, is not a, a bag site. It's just, you just take it and drop whatever you have, so you don't have to have a special bag.
Yeah.
Bring in your target bag and throw them in, and away you go. It's like a drop box. So, just to clarify, it's not a special bag that you have to use, which is a methodology. I think, I think, Paul, you meant, didn't we have a discussion about that at some point?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, there, those are two different disposal systems. The bags are really designed for very small quantities. I think the ones, we actually have some at, at the P D that we hand out on occasion. Uh, the vast majority of people that stop into the P D ask, where can I get rid of larger quantities? Uh, and we refer them over to Water Patrol, so.
Is that something we should, we could offer here? I mean, if it doesn't cost us anything and's not a hassle?
There are a number of requirements. It's certainly something we could look into. Again, I know we did a number of years ago, and it didn't really meet the threshold, because there was one so close.
Oh, okay.
And so I'm guessing that hasn't changed, but-
Okay.
Uh, we certainly could revisit that, and if it's a possibility, absolutely, we'd be interested in doing that. But there are a number of requirements-
Yeah, okay.
-for that.
I just, my mom and I were just talking about this today. It's so weird. And so I just think it's maybe something in the newsletter, because I think a lot of residents would be interested in that.
Sure. Um, okay, just real quick, um, also attended National Night Out with the chief, and also Dave Locke, the coordinator of the National Night Out for our city, and we, we attended five parties, and, um, some of them were at the very, very beginning, um, so not a lot of people yet. Uh, we did go to the Woodland Cove one as well, and, um, yeah, I understand what you're saying, kinda spread out. Uh, Palmer Point was another one we visited, and then South Saunders, and also on Lake, Lakeside, and then at the end of Painter Road. So we, we were, we were hustling to get to those, that many, but, um, great, great event, eighteen parties this year, and all very well attended, and a lot of fun meeting people and talking to people, and a lot of people just very positive. Really, I just loved the event, loved Minutrista, um, just were very positive, so that was good to connect with the community. Um, also attended the Gillespie Board Meeting, um, went well, uh, nothing much to report there. They have a lot of activities going on, and that's about it, so. That's it. With that, if there's a motion, we can be adjourned.
Still moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. A motion is made by Ms. Mortensen, and second, I'm Mr. Malater. All those in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.